Staff, the police department represented by Lieutenant B. Andy Parks is here for money issues, planning development, public works, library, the whole shoot and match. Okay. Let's see, additions to the agenda, are there any? Yeah? Okay. Um, declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, bias. Okay. Presentations, comments from the public.
On the consent agenda, we're looking to approve the senior services meal site agreement. Anyway, I work for them, so I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll get...
At that point.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph. Comments from the public? Here's a chance to unscripted. Okay? Nothing so far. All right. So, the consent agenda has three items on it, June 6th, 2016, council minutes, senior services meal site agreement renewal, and approval of the abstract of election results from May 17th, 2016, primary election. What would you folks like to do with that?
I would make a motion to approve items A, B, and C on the consent agenda.
Item which one now? B.
Items A, B, and C.
A, B, and C. Okay, the consent agenda, a motion to approve, is there a second?
I second.
All right, Joe, thank you. All of you have had a chance to look at that. No discussion. I'd ask for an affirmative vote. Would all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I abstain?
And an abstention?
Yes.
And any contraries? None? Okay, good. And we move right along. Start with a public hearing certifying eligibility and electing to receive state revenue sharing funds. And let's see, script to be read at commencement of public hearings. Oregon revised statute 221.770 requires two public meetings to hear from citizens regarding the use of state revenue sharing funds distributed to the city of Staton. The first hearing was held at the budget committee meeting on May 23rd, 2016. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony on the proposed uses of the funds. Before opening the public hearing, we're gonna receive a staff report. So, Andy, Mr. Parks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. The fiscal '16-'17 budget includes estimated revenue of $10,000 from cigarette taxes, $103,000 from liquor taxes, $66,000 from state revenue sharing, for a total of $179,000 in your general fund. You additionally have $450,000 budgeted in state gas tax monies in the street fund. So, the total state shared revenues amount to $629,000. The money received in the general fund is targeted towards police, community development, community center, and other general fund-supported operations. As well, the street fund, the dollars are restricted for street maintenance. I'd be glad to address any questions you have about the source amount and the uses.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Let's see, staff report. "I'll now open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to provide testimony regarding the proposed uses of state revenue sharing, please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record." We've simplified this and kind of closed, not closed, cut down some of the procedure on this. For, against, general. What's it all about? Anything you want. Okay. Nothing at all. Okay. So, if there isn't anything on this, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we'll go to council deliberation on it. All right. Folks, have at it. Andy, just as a personal favor, would you go through those numbers one more time? The breakdown on that.
Sure. Total is $629,000.
Right.
With $10,000 cigarette tax, $103,000 liquor tax, $66,000 in state shared revenues. That's a total of $179,000, and that's in your general fund. And again, that's being used for police, community development, community center, and other governmental services. And then, $450,000 is your allocation of state gas tax, which will be used for street maintenance.
Okay. We still get $10,000 out of cigarette at tobacco sales in the community?
Yeah, that number, that continues to actually go up.
Really? I would think it, well, it is me, I guess, I think it'd be going down. Fewer and fewer people smoking?
Tax is going up.
Oh, the tax goes up. Okay. Okay. Hmm. Questions or thoughts, folks? We need to, what do we need to do with this? Oh, council decision on resolution 943 and 44. So, we should look at those, 943 and 44. Okay. And was all, is all of this back there for anyone to look at that wanted to? It is? Okay, thank you, Mr. Park. Oh, there it is. I didn't get this number. $103,000 from liquor taxes. That's more like it. That, yeah. Okay. Uh-huh. $450,000 in state gas taxes in the street fund. That's dedicated, though.
Yeah, it's restricted in terms of its use.
Has to be for street or public transportation maintenance?
Not public transportation systems per se, like a bus, but for street maintenance.
Street maintenance, okay. Okay. All right. What would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian, thank you.
I'll offer a motion to approve resolution number 943, certifying the city of Staton's eligibility to receive state shared revenues by providing necessary municipal services. And I'd like to offer a motion to approve resolution number 944, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second then to approve resolution 943 and 44, certifying eligibility and electing to receive state revenue sharing funds, and nine, that's 943. We have to provide the necessary municipal services to do this, including police and fire protection, street construction, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and one or more utility services. So, we have to qualify to get that, and we do. Alyssa, would you poll, if there's no discussion, would you poll the council, please?
Yes, and I'm gonna do it on the two separate motions. I'm gonna start with resolution number 943. Bring my paper over here. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Ustleman?
Aye.
Counselor Nigle?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes, five to zero. And then, on resolution 944, Counselor Nigle?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Ustleman?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Alyssa. Next item is city of Staton 2016-17 fiscal year budget. And from, that's from July 1st, July to June 30th, right? A fiscal, fiscal year. Anyone out there know what the federal fiscal year is?
October 1st, September 30th.
That's not fair. You're supposed to know that stuff. Folks, anyway, thank you, Andy. But different fiscal years, okay. Let's see, would you take us through that, pretty please? Andy Parks, staff report.
Sure, glad to. So, as you may recall, on May 24th, the city of Staton budget committee approved the city budget for the fiscal year 2016-17. Included in that was levying the city's established permanent tax rate of $3.32 per thousand of taxable assessed value, and also levying a local option property tax at the rate of $0.60 per thousand, as approved by Staton voters on May 15th, 2012. You'll have a public hearing after this related to this. What you are allowed to do is, per local budget law, allows the governing body to make changes to the approved budget during its adoption this evening, as long as the estimated appropriations in a fund are not changed by more than 5,000 or 10% of the appropriations, whichever is greater, and that's by fund. I wanted to call to your attention a few changes that staff is proposing that you include in your approved budget, or in your adopted budget. This is changes from the approval received on May 24th. One, you may recall, we talked a little bit about the rent in the, from the theater, and talking about whether that should be in the general fund or in the facilities fund. Per that conversation, that money has been moved to the facilities fund. This will reduce income in the general fund, increase rent in the facilities fund, and therefore, you'll see slight adjustment in terms of the general fund unappropriated amount, and an increase in the contingency fund, contingency account within the facilities fund. We also, in reviewing the documents that the police did, they noticed that a communication error between him, police, and myself, we omitted $10,000 worth of capital equipment, and the police are requesting, and the city administrator, Campbell, has agreed to put that money in for your consideration. Then additionally, in the year-end review of expenditures and so forth, as you guys are aware, there's a few attorney-related issues related to personnel matters and land use. Those bills came in, updated the year-end estimates and so forth, and that is gonna reduce your general fund carryover by approximately $200,000. And that's combining all those costs for those legal fees and so forth, and plating them into the general fund. So, that's gonna reduce your unappropriated fund balance in the general fund by $200,000. Those have been incorporated into the resolution number 945 for your consideration. Be glad to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Andy. There probably will be some. We're going at this kind of a little bit backwards. Oregon budget law requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body prior to its adoption of a budget for the ensuing fiscal year. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input and testimony concerning the budget approved by the city of Staton budget committee. And we've already had the staff report, so we'll go ahead and start this one. Anyone that would like to provide testimony regarding the budget approved by the city of Staton budget committee, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. So, open mic and open forum. Anything at all? And Andy, can members of the public address questions to you, or would you rather have us do it?
However you, I'm comfortable doing it however you...
I don't know what kind of questions are gonna come out. Anything from the council? I mean, all of us sat on that budget committee and saw it all and listened to it all and added things, and so... Total city budget, $20,636,231. Appropriations of $18,383,000. A general fund budget of $4,225,400. Keith, that shows an increase, or Andy, whoever has that number right in front of them, that shows an increase over this, this year that we're in of what, please?
I don't know off the top of my head. Andy, do you know?
Oh, let me see if I can find it real quick. Two or $3 maybe, or more?
Yeah, it's, it's very similar to the overall, and I don't have my written document, which I'd have it, maybe real quick. But it's, it's actually, I think, a slight decline, if I recall correctly. I think your total budget last year was about $400,000, $500,000 greater. I recall this year, we omitted a budgeting grants and so forth, unless they were ultimately grants that you had secured and so forth. And last year, you, you had a number allocated in the $500,000, $600,000 range that really didn't ultimately occur, but it was budgeted.
Do you even realize what a, what a wonderful statement a person could make to a community about that? Come on, we've heard it before. No? No? Okay. That's good. That's a good start. I like that. Okay. Let's see. Is there anyone that wants to say anything about that? If not, I have to close the hearing, and we'll go to council deliberation on this. Oh, it's been a long day. Okay, so, council, what would you like to do with that? We've all, we sat through the details of it. It's up to you, folks. Go ahead, please.
I would make a motion to adopt the 2016-2017 budget as presented.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All right. A motion and a second, to adopt the 2016-17 city budget making appropriations and levying property taxes for the fiscal year. Any thoughts or discussion or comments? Okay, Alyssa, to you, please. Poll the council.
Sure. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Nigle?
Yes.
Counselor Ustleman?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay. Thank you again, Alyssa. All right. Land use file, 9-04/16 legislative amendments to land use development code zones. Do I need, do we have another public hearing, don't we? Okay. Good evening, I'm Hank Porter, Mayor of Staton, and I will be presiding over this hearing. I have to read this before we begin, and I'm doing it in order this time instead of messing it up. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 9-04/16 concerning legislative amendments to the land use development code regarding zones in which crop production is permitted. The hearing is now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called to speak. During the public hearing, a copy of the proposed amendments to the city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain either copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing. I don't hear any. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter. I don't hear any. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? I don't hear any. We're now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
I think that's, yeah, that is...
That'd be me.
You're wrong.
The issue before you tonight are proposed legislative text amendments to the land use and development code regarding the zones in which crop production is permitted. This is an issue that was initiated by the planning commission at the request of a business owner, actually, two business owners in the city. The land use controls table within the code spells out the permitted uses in each of the zoning districts, and the table lists the use crop production as permitted only in our industrial agriculture zone. Presumably, when the code was written back in the 1970s, outdoor crop production was what the drafters had in mind. I've included in the staff report of a portion of the zoning map that shows the area zoned industrial agriculture. It is in the southwest corner of the city, and except for dedicated but unimproved street rights of way, and the small area of land owned by the city for one of our water reservoirs, all of the areas zoned industrial agriculture is owned by NORPAC, and is used for the disposal of their processed wastewater from the cannery. The city has received a number of inquiries about possible greenhouse production and indoor crop production, but there is no location in the city where those are permitted uses. The amendment forwarded to you by the planning commission would permit crop production in the light industrial zone, the industrial commercial zone, and the commercial general zone, but restricted in those zones to indoor crop production only. Outdoor crop production in the industrial agriculture zone would not be affected by the amendment, and any existing outdoor crop production operations in the light industrial zone, which I believe is the only area in the city where there currently is any commercial agriculture going on, would continue to be legally existing non-conforming uses as they have been for the past 40 or so years. It's probably no secret that the inquiries the city has received have been about marijuana production. In addition to the location controls that are in the zoning code, there are other provisions of city code enacted by the council that control where marijuana businesses, including production, may be located. In September of last year, you enacted an ordinance that regulates all marijuana businesses, and section 1512040 of the code currently requires that any marijuana business be located a minimum of 200 feet from any residence, except for apartments in mixed-use buildings in commercial, industrial, or the downtown zone, or any residence that is restricted to persons 55 years and older. Also, no marijuana business may be located within 1,000 feet of a school, or 1,000 feet of another marijuana business. So, regardless of the zoning, the business licensing code also has those types of locational restrictions. So, regardless of where you allow it in the zoning, the business license code restricts the location of marijuana production operations to only a few locations in the city. I've included on the third page of the staff report a map that shows in green all of the buildings in the city that are located in a light industrial, industrial commercial, or general commercial zone, and that meet the locational restrictions of the business There's a total of 69 buildings that are shown in that diagram, and of these, five are located in the commercial general zone. Those five buildings are likely to not be either suitable or available for crop production. Those five buildings are the Roths, and the four stores that are adjacent to it, the physical therapy clinic on Wilco Road, McDonald's, the Columbia Bank, and the car wash building at the Shell Station on the north side of Shaft Road. So, those are the only buildings in the commercial general zone that meet the business licensing The planning commission originally considered allowing crop production in all three zones, but when presented with the information that I just described about which zones it would be permitted, that the business licensing code would allow marijuana businesses to be located, then when they published the notice of the amendment, they chose to include it only in the industrial zones. At their public hearing, there was testimony from four individuals, three of whom said that the city should allow it in the commercial general zone, and following the public hearing, the planning commission amended, changed the amendment to include the commercial general zone before they forwarded it to you with a recommendation for approval. So, the planning commission's recommendation is to include all three zones. Staff's recommendation is to permit indoor crop production in the light industrial and industrial commercial zone, but we make no recommendation regarding whether it'll be permitted in the commercial general zone. If the council wants to permit indoor crop production in the commercial general zone, then to effectively do that, amendments to Title V of the code will be necessary, the business licensing code. Staff report lays out four different options to the council, to approve the ordinance as recommended by the planning commission, to make changes to the ordinance and approve it, to return the ordinance to staff for further refinement, or to take no action and leave the code as it is today. And I'll answer any questions you have, and then turn it over to the public for testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. We'll go to questions from the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian.
Dan, what street is this, up and down?
Running north-south is Wilco Road.
Okay. And either one on top, in the middle?
Shaft Road to the north, Locust Street in the middle, and I guess, West Washington runs diagonal, and you've got Ida Street creating that five-way intersection.
All right. Thanks.
Dan, we don't, it's not up, it's pretty obvious, but it might have been useful, because we know there'd be some interest in this one, to have that green map.
Oh, on the screen, yeah.
Yeah.
I think anybody that is of interest has seen the map already.
Okay. Okay. And there are copies of it back there?
I believe copies of the entire packet are in the notebook in the, on the back table.
And there are no locations in the whole rest of the city that would...
Any other area that is zoned commercial, general, there are no buildings that are more than 1,000 feet from a school, or, and more than 200 feet from a residence.
Okay. Okay. We're in. Questions from the council? More of them? Folks? Back and forth? Someone suggested for these public meetings in the past few months that, that I go through these, going through these things, poll each, each person, kind of force them to say something, so that one or two or three of us don't have to do all the talking. I haven't done that, but hoping when people have something to say, they'll say it. So, anything? Then proponents' testimony, those in favor of this. Please. Darren, give us a name and address and...
My name's Adam Culbertson, and I'm the owner of Homegrown Remedies at 277...
I'm the owner of Homegrown Remedies at 277 North Third Avenue here in Stateon, and I propose that we allow indoor crop production and commercial general zoning, you know, for the simple fact that a person needs a brewery to run a bar in most cases, and so we need a, we need a grow to run our dispensary and for everything to run smoothly, smoothly, to kind of put it in perspective as far as numbers are concerned, because you can't really argue with numbers. So far, as of May 1st, we've paid the state of Oregon $48,608.16. Had Stateon been getting their 3% of that, you folks would have gotten $9,270.44 in the first five months of this year. Where the grow that I am trying to get allowed is actually at 1885 West Washington Street. It's right behind Jim McGeegey's office and the storage units that are there, big commercial warehouses that are there. The nearest building to me is about 170 feet away. Obviously, I have something to come back and ask you if this is allowed, and I'll have to come back and ask you to lower the restriction down to 150 feet. If you could see where my business is located, I've got a whole 'nother shop in between me and my building. My building's located closest to the storage units there. I don't have another home until clear over across the street behind Dale's Auto Body out over towards Ida Street. I'm over on Washington. Closest homes to me are 170 feet away from my, from the edge of my building. So if you, my building's 60 feet deep, you get halfway through my building, I'm clear. But half my building's less than 200 feet, so therefore I don't qualify. And so what I would ask you folks to do is allow indoor crop production in commercial general zoning, as well as bring the, bring the limit down to 150 feet from a residential zone or from a residential home.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So if you could start a grow thing, would that bring additional jobs in our area?
It will bring additional jobs.
And if so, what do you receive?
It will bring additional jobs because obviously when you grow marijuana, you have to have people to trim it and stuff. I mean, it obviously can be done by yourself, which is what we do now. It takes a lot of hours of time to do that. It is something that we do plan on bringing employees in for that, as well as we plan on, see with medical marijuana, a lot of people don't realize there is no tax coming to your city. There's no tax going to anybody because it's not taxed. However, with recreational, which is what I have every intention of turning my warehouse into, I will pay a 3% tax to the city. So as, as with the dispensary, as soon as we get our recreational license in October, we will be paying 3% tax to the city, 17% tax to the state. Same with the rec grow, 3% to the city, 17% to the state. So not only will we be creating jobs, we'll also be paying you folks directly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Adam, two questions. Do you live in town?
I live about four miles outside of town in West Stateon.
So you don't live in the, in the community, in the city?
I don't anymore. I used to live over off West Town Drive.
Is there a resident in that house that's 170 feet from your proposed location?
They were actually at the, they were actually at the commissioner's meeting, and they were for this amendment. They were there in favor of it. They were one of the folks that spoke.
Adam, take me back to that, that number intrigues me. That $48,000, that's what, at this point, 20% of your sales?
So we're, 25% tax is what we have to charge.
Twenty-five.
As of May 31st, we're at $48,608.16 to the state. If you folks would have gotten your 3%, it would have been $9,270.44 in five months. So you can figure that number will be a minimum of $20,000 a year from just our business in downtown Stateon. Now, the recreational grow is not going to create as much revenue, of course, because it's a grow, not a, not a retail dispensary. There's not as much revenue created there, but it will nonetheless create revenue that will go right to the city.
Alan, if you would be honest, do you know, are there any negatives that are out there about communities and having grow operations near them?
No, no, there hasn't really been a lot of negativity coming, you know, the thing, the biggest thing is it's actually been a lot of positivity because of how many jobs are being created. You know, right now Marion County's losing $110 million. $110 million because they decided not to allow recreational grows and recreational business in the, in the Marion County area. Stateon hasn't done that, which has made this a very unique city, and therefore this city will actually reap the rewards of that once we get our recreational license, which will happen in October. That's as soon as we can get it. The state just doesn't issue them before then, or we would have it before then.
Other questions? Adam? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Are there any opponents to this proposal?
I'm a proponent.
You're a proponent?
A proponent.
Then...
Go ahead. A name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Sidney Levin. I'm actually the owner of 1885 West Washington Street. I am a resident of the city of Salem and am in commercial industrial real estate and have other occupancies related to indoor crop propagation, and am intimately familiar with zone use applications in the city of Salem, and would like to see congruency between City of Salem and City of Stateon for ease of use like Mr. Culbertson's business. In addition to the increasing the zone allowance to include commercial general use, one of the elements to the, I guess, zone rules in the city of Salem is that occupancies are not within 200 feet of residentially zoned property. The residences that are adjacent to 1885 West Washington are not residentially zoned. It's not the city of Stateon's intention for those buildings to move forward as residences. It is obviously by, you know, city planning that those are to be part of a commercial zone. They just happen to be pre-existing nonconforming. As we understand, if something was to happen to those buildings, or if somebody was to come along and, you know, knock them all down, that would basically eliminate any objection to the occupancies, you know, across the street. Effectively, becoming congruent with Salem kind of gives everybody a really simple game plan and can move businesses in and out of what is otherwise an agricultural community with, with a lot of ease of use. This is an ag community. Marijuana has been Oregon's largest cash crop since the 1980s, over and above timber sales, even in the black market. As Adam illustrated, there's a lot of revenues to be had in this community. We've had a lot of revenues added to the city of Salem budgets, and I hope that you guys consider the benefits that can be had. As an owner of other commercial industrial properties with marijuana occupancies, I would also encourage you to consider that for propagation purposes, having buildings, having occupancies spread out with 1,000 feet between them is actually not very utilitarian. It is, it behooves to group, it behooves the occupants to group them together. It keeps a lot more, I guess, a higher level of security, and it keeps, I guess, it's, it's akin to not having a strip club every, you know, 1,000 feet. If you, if you're familiar with some of the, the city ordinances in, say, like Portland, where they have to be spread out, and then you have a row of these sorts of things, it would be better to, to couple propagation together, and so to relieve that element of the ordinance would also benefit the ability for people to bring businesses here.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the lady? Would you take a question if somebody had one? Okay. Yeah, security would seem to be the big thing on any kind of, can I call it, remote grow operations, not attached to the business, let's say, retail business, where you've got a warehouse somewhere? And how do you, you know, I guess just, I'm curious, how do you secure the things?
You have cameras, you have a full alarm system.
Can you go to the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Adam?
What you have and what we currently have is cameras throughout the whole building. We also have the front doors reinforced with industrial-style locks and a steel plate, half-inch-thick steel plate on the inside. We've also have motion sensors, everything that goes along with an alarm, sirens, motion sensors, and it actually calls directly to my phone, and will call directly to Central, Grand Central Station and all that good stuff. And so the other thing that you do is you also knock down the smell by using the proper filters, and I just actually had Rick Seabans down there the other day, and he actually said that he didn't smell anything down there at all. So if that kind of gives you an idea on how much smell there is not. As if done right with today's technology, it doesn't have to stink like a dead skunk out in front of your house, and you don't have to smell it at all.
You know...
All right. Thank you.
Hank?
Yes.
Oh, please.
One of the things, I think we've discussed this before, there are, there are people growing marijuana in large amounts legally within a very short distance from this town and that have, I don't know, I don't know if you're aware of that, but I've been, been very surprised by some of the locations that I've been on and the amount of marijuana that's been growing outside without any fences or anything, and I, and I've wondered, do people know?
Your neighbors are allowed to legally grow a handful of plants, quite large, in their backyard.
This was not, this is not a handful. I've been to more than one site within probably five miles of Stateon that have acres of marijuana plants growing.
Ooh.
So I think that people aren't aware that this isn't like, this isn't going to be a big new thing here locally. We have stuff that, that people have been allowed to grow. People that have land can rent their land to several different people that, that have medical marijuana, and so they're, they're all growing on the same piece of property. So it's not, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's not, it's not like it's new, like this is a new horizon for something in our area. It's just that it's a horizon that we might actually benefit from.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on, uh, proponents? Go ahead, please.
I'm for it. My name is John Hudnall. I'm also at 1885 West Washington Street. A different building than Adam's in, but we're in the same parking lot. Just wanted to say I'm for it. If you guys have any questions, I'm pretty well-versed in the cannabis industry. You know, I, in December, I found out that, you know, we were not allowed to, to produce in that zone, so we shut, I shut down my operation. I had to lay off about 15 employees, 12 of which live in this community and probably spend a great deal of their, their money here.
All right.
Any questions?
We'll see here. Anyone questions for this young man? Okay. Thank you. So proponents, any other proponents? Let's go to opponents then. Those that want to say something about this in a less than positive light. General testimony? Questions from the public? Questions from the council? A staff summary, Dan?
I don't really have anything to add other than to just remind you of the options you've got before you, which is to approve the first consideration as presented, to suggest changes and approve it with changes, or send it back to staff for additional changes, or take no action and leave the code unchanged.
Okay. Okay, then we'll close the hearing and go to council deliberation, and we'll find out what you folks want to do with this. There's, there could be a motion to approve, and if it isn't unanimous, it comes back on July 18th. Approve with modifications, return the ordinance to the staff for further refinement, or retain the code unchanged. So there are possibilities. Yes, ma'am?
So is number one, approve the first consideration of ordinance nine, is that what the planning commission recommended?
The ordinance as drafted is, is what was recommended by the planning commission. Yes.
So that's one?
Yes.
Is that our option one?
Yes.
Dan, is the thing that was brought up tonight, the 150-foot, let's say, barrier from a residence instead of 200, is that, was that, did that come out of the planning commission, or is that just a request from interested parties?
That is a request from interested parties because that restriction is not in Title 17. It was not discussed by the planning commission. That is a restriction that is in the business licensing code in Title V and was enacted without any input from the planning commission because it was not a land use code decision, it was a business licensing decision.
Okay. Where does that leave us tonight?
Well, that leaves you tonight with a proposal from the planning commission that is in front of you in the form of ordinance 996, and as I said in my initial presentation, if you want to allow marijuana crop production in the commercial general zone, then you will need to make amendments to Title V, and if council gives staff an indication that you want to consider those types of amendments, then we can prepare them and present them to you. You heard testimony tonight requesting that you consider those types of changes.
However, we can approve the, the 996 without, at this point, doing anything to V.
Correct. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So we can just approve what the planning committee, planning commission looked at and already approved and sent to us for review?
Yes.
Okay.
And then come back to land use code on, we can go back to that Title V later?
And then come back to your, to your business licensing code at some subsequent time.
Okay. I need to write this down. I won't remember it otherwise. Okay. So council deliberation, I guess we're, we're in that council decision. What would you folks like to do with this tonight?
I move that we approve ordinance number 996 as presented.
Okay. Let's see. Approve the first consideration of 996. It would pass with unanimous vote. Otherwise, if it's not, it would come back on the 18th of July.
Right. If I'm understanding, that this is the one that the planning commission has recommended for the council to approve?
That's what we're doing.
Okay. That's...
Okay. Is there a second, please? On a motion to approve the first consideration of ordinance 996. Is there a second? Okay. Motion dies for lack of a second. Let's do something else then. What else would you folks like to do? Counselor?
Mr. Mayor? My thought is, we've made a lot of concessions to this point for the industry up to this point, and if you recall, the number of people that came and had concerns about the location over by Dairy Queen and really didn't feel like they were being heard, and they were actually residents of town, I think we need to take them into consideration, even though they're not here tonight. I'm not opposed to allowing it in the industrial light or the, two of the, two of the three, in the industrial, commercial, or... industrial, commercial, or the light industrial, but I think going to the general, commercial general is a little bit of a slippery slope in the future.
Is that your proposal? Is that your proposal?
No, I'm just making a statement.
I agree with what Brian said. I would want to take some more time before we considered allowing it in the commercial general.
Can we move forward? Go ahead, please.
So, so are you saying that we do a motion that it's approved in the other two and just not then in the commercial general?
For the time being.
Is that one of these three? Or is this a new one?
It would be option two with filling in the blanks as to what changes.
As the modification.
Right, staff wasn't about to guess what changes the council would want to see in the code, and so therefore didn't suggest specific changes.
So, two with fill in the blanks and what would you like to put in the blanks, folks? Someone would suggest something so we can at least get to a vote on this tonight.
I'll offer a motion to approve the ordinance with the following modification, that crop production is a permitted use only in the light industrial and industrial, commercial zones.
I second.
Light industrial and, and what?
Industrial, commercial.
Industrial. Okay, I've got a motion and a second, thank you, Joe, to approve the ordinance with a modification of, of nine ninety-six, the following change is not in the commercial general zone, only in light industrial and industrial, commercial zones. Okay? And this one also, if it's unanimous, it passes, if not, it comes back on July eighteenth?
No, because, because there, it is a change to the published ordinance, even if it is unanimous, it will come back to the council on July eighteen for a second consideration.
Whatever happens, we'll see this on the eighteenth. Okay, any other discussion? Alyssa, would you poll the group, please?
Counselor Uselman?
Aye.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Nicol?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, so, we'll see this with changes on the eighteenth of July, but it does pass. So, and if we wanted to go, if we wanted to consider that hundred and fifty foot setback, barrier, whatever, that would be another land use issue down, down the trail.
Business license.
It's not allowed.
Right, no?
The business license issue.
Business license.
Yeah.
We'll get it figured out, I promise. Okay.
We're not going to figure it out.
All right. You were right, though, the numbers are impressive. God, that's a lot of money. Wow. And that's one little store for five months. Wow. Okay, that's wonderful, thank you. All right, let's see. Unfinished business, none. New business, I think we're done with the land use, do I have to, oh. Closing statement, city council decisions can be appealed to land use board of appeals within twenty-one days in accordance with O R S one nine seven point eight three oh. Okay. New business, resolution number nine forty-six, fiscal year twenty fifteen sixteen, budget appropriation transfers, action, Mr. Parks.
This particular resolution is presented to you to address expenditures of appropriations or in excess of appropriations for the current fiscal year. We talked earlier about legal costs in the general fund, so within your general fund operations, you're needing an additional appropriation there of approximately two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Part of that is around fifty thousand dollars that we originally anticipated in this stormwater fund that we're moving over, consolidating into the general fund. A second item deals with parks-related capital cost in the construction fund. You had a total budget there of around seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, however it was allocated into a couple of different categories, capital outlay, materials and services, and contingency. The total cost is going to be recorded in capital outlay, therefore we need to move the contingencies or the dollars around, so we're moving, requesting now moving dollars to capital outlay from materials and services and contingency. So, the net impact on the construction fund is zero in terms of moving dollars around. The net impact in the general fund is going to be approximately two hundred thousand dollars in the reduction in the carryover. Hopefully, all that made sense.
No.
Some would call it a clerical thing, an IRS or should say an O R S person would call it compliance of Oregon budget law, or they're trying to keep you, keep you in compliance. Andy, we're gonna, I like your confidence in these numbers, so, so we'll go with that. Council deliberation on that. It is resolution nine forty-six, a fiscal year budget appropriation transfer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'll offer a motion to approve resolution number nine four six as presented.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion. Thank you, counselor and Jill. Motion and a second to approve resolution nine forty-six for twenty fifteen sixteen budget appropriation transfers. Any questions or thoughts? Okay, let's just go to a voice vote on that if we could. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution nine forty-six is approved. Nine forty-seven, authorizing an interfund loan transfer from vehicle, vehicle replacement to the stormwater fund. Mr. Parks, you're on again.
Yeah, you may recall that the original budget for this year included an interfund loan from the storm, or from the sewer S D Cs to the stormwater fund. As we put the budget together this year, what we noticed is the sewer S D C fund ultimately was going to be drawn down to a level that might not allow you to move forward on some of your capital projects in sewer. Additionally, sewer S D C funds or any S D C funds aren't really the most ideal fund to be loaning money from to another fund. S D Cs are monitored really closely by, by the building community. Therefore, what we suggested in the budget process was to go ahead and move that loan from the, from the S D C fund over to the vehicle replacement fund, which you have about a million two in there presently. This would draw that down to about a million dollars, so there's more than adequate dollars to make that loan from that fund into your stormwater fund. By Oregon budget law as well, you're required to have a formal action of the board in the form of a resolution or ordinance authorizing the loan, so this goes ahead and memorializes that into a resolution. We've also provided an amortization schedule which shows how that's going to be repaid. You know, it's for what, a ten-year, excuse me, a ten-year term with interest at one percent.
Thank you, Andy, and that, that repayment plan needs to be in there. I mean, that's, that's neat, yeah, but.
Well, yeah, I think it, it's very helpful to have that so that when those of us that aren't here in the future have to take care of things, it's nice to have something to understand what was being done and why, lays it out.
Everyone gets to see what, what's supposed to happen, okay? All right, council deliberation on resolution nine forty-seven. If not, could we get a motion to move on this, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian.
I'll offer a motion to approve the resolution as presented, number nine four seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, thank you, ma'am. Authorizing an interfund loan transfer from a vehicle replacement to the stormwater fund. Are there any other questions or discussion? And again, could we get a decision? Would all in favor say aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hearing nothing, we'll decide. Motion passes. Resolution number nine forty-eight, twenty sixteen seventeen, fees and fines. Next item of business, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, before you is resolution nine forty-eight, every year we go through and update our, our fee schedule, staff has done this. I'd be happy to answer any questions, staffers would be happy to answer any questions to lay it out. We've identified in the report all of the items that we're proposing to change, and we did move some items around just to try to make it a little more clear, transparent about where they were occurring at. So, I'd be happy, or staff would be happy to answer any questions you have about the proposed fee schedule.
Okay, other questions on that fee schedule, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Keith, a couple of questions.
Sure.
We doubled the bail violation for business regulations, can you expand on that? And the garage sale one, we increased to five hundred dollars. You know what those two are specifically? I think I know what the garage sale one is, I think, I believe it's because we got rid of the permit and that's way, chief's way to control the perpetual sales, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know what the, the increase in the business regulation one is?
Charlie, do you remember what the, this was again, a recommendation from the police chief as well, based off the business regulations. What we were trying to do and what we tried to do is, with all of these, is go through what the actual cost was in terms of staff time and administrative costs, so generally speaking, that would be it, but I don't remember exactly right off the top of my head. Charlie doesn't remember either.
Okay.
Sorry, can I ask that?
Do you know, can you give us an example of violation that would pertain to? No?
No, I wasn't part of that discussion.
Okay. Okay, we'll come back to that. And then, just real quick on the system development charges, those increased as well?
Yeah, this goes back to the discussion we had during the budget meeting about increasing based off of inflationary rate, just to keep those in line with the inflationary rate, and I believe that was, percentage we're talking about was one point five percent?
The, the resolutions that establish the system development charges say they shall be adjusted for inflation on an annual basis, so the adjustment that you have in front of you reflects the change in the construction cost index as published in the engineering news weekly, or whatever it's called, and is a three point one percent increase from last year.
Okay, that, my recollection is that was in discussion, we were talking about increasing the S D C, is that was part of that back and forth volley of discussion?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Do those, those items that you've raised earlier, Brian, do those include us voting on, on this tonight?
I think it'd be.
Does anyone feel like they want to come back?
I think it'd be okay to, to say, you know, to leave out the business regulations and do the rest so they're all in place for July first, and then we can bring back that July, July eighteenth, that one item, just for discussion. I think a motion can be made that we can do it that way. Since we can't properly answer the question, I think it's, it's worth being answered before we raise the piece. It'd be.
One other, one other little thing, there on, this is page two of nine, above the, those two items Brian identified, we got a pretty good definition of what is junk? Because that's almost in the eye of the holder, isn't it? I don't know. Secondhand, secondhand goods are not always junk, I know that from firsthand experience. Hey.
I think that's just been the terminology, junk.
Yeah, well, I, I just wonder if, some of the, some of these things maybe should either be better defined or left out if we're.
The, the code defines these terms.
So, they're in the code?
Yes.
And what's the definition of junk?
I didn't bring my code with me, other than the land use code, which I don't think defines it.
Anything that's not new.
Things that, things, oh, anything that's not new, oh, no.
Secondhand, if it's been pre-owned.
Oh.
Anything I want to get rid of.
No, things that, that obvious to the general population have no value whatsoever. Is that, that's what junk is?
The, the land use code, which is the only section of the code I happen to bring with me tonight, defines the term junkyard as a yard, field, or other outside area used to store, dismantle, or otherwise handle discarded, worn out, and junked plumbing, heating supplies, electronic and industrial equipment, household appliances or furniture, discarded scrap and junk lumber, or old or scrap copper, brass, rope, rags, batteries, paper trash, rubber debris, waste and all scrap iron, steel, and other sporadic material.
All of that stuff has value.
It does, that's why there are junkyards that recycle it.
There we go, okay, so we should call it recycle.
So, it's not garbage, it's junk.
Okay, yeah, no, not garbage. Okay, I'll leave it alone, I guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's see, what do we need to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Get off on these tangents and get lost. I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian, please.
Real quick, Counselor Nicol reminded me that the change in the questions that I had might be in reference to Judge Clark presenting to us that one time and asking us to put the, the fines more consistent?
To make them more uniform?
Yeah, more uniform, so, that might be the recollection.
And I apologize, I know I've, I've, it's been shared with me and I, I just, I apologize, I'm blanking, that, that sounds, Alyssa seems to think that sounds correct as well, but I don't know if I'm just wanting to say that or if that's actually the truth, I mean, it makes, it makes sense. Like I said, I'd be happy to say, you know, to approve with that, you know, with that exception, and we can bring it back just to make sure that's the case.
Let's blame it on the judge.
So, I got an answer, actually. To match what we are doing for the marijuana licensing violation, so here's, here's what, I contacted the chief, here's what he says, to match what we are doing with marijuana licensing violation, all our business licensing should be doing the same for all business issues, so it is to bring uniformity.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
With that set out, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number nine four eight as presented.
I second.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Alyssa, you got those? Counselor Nicol and Counselor Uselman, motion and a second to approve resolution number nine forty-eight, adopting fees and charges for various city services. Any other discussion? Okay, on a voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Staff commission reports, finance director Cindy and Elizabeth, what do, Keith, do you want to carry, can you carry that tonight?
Yeah, I can, I think the staff report speaks for itself, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, there it is, it's in our, it's in our packet, okay. All right. Anything there? Okay, Lieutenant B, a police report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I already let the chief down once tonight by not answering the question, so I'll let his May staff report speak for itself.
Lieutenant B, has the department done anything with that request earlier in the spring to look at the county dog licensing numbers? Has that happened yet?
No, sir. I know.
I, I know Rich has, Police Chief Stevens does have, have numbers available, and I think they can, they can be shared. I know that was a request you had made, and so I think you can come in and we can provide that to you.
Okay. So still in the works?
He says so. I will ask tomorrow, though.
Okay. Thank you. I, I would appreciate that. Oh, let's see, what's next? We're getting it. Lance, Mr. Ludwig, Public Works.
You have the monthly operating report for Public Works. I have nothing further to add to it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I always look at that, that street sweeping report. We make sure that gets to the water control district, don't we?
Uh, we put out a annual report, and everybody gets to see that, but I don't send that down monthly. They have access to the, these notes, just as everybody else in the city does.
That's our consistent effort to keep debris, actually, out of, out of that system. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ludwig? Uh, Mr. Fleishman, again, planning and development director, please.
I have nothing to add to my written report. I'll answer any questions you've got.
Do you, you have a planning commission up and running, I mean, a full?
Yes, we've got four, five members appointed, passed meetings since all five have been appointed. They have all been present and engaged.
Okay, vigorous discussion and so on and so forth?
I wouldn't go, go quite that far, but they've been present and engaged.
Okay, that's fine. That's, that's good, the best we can hope for.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if my question is for Dan or Lance, but if we were to do a continuous walkway over the ditch.
Alongside?
Over.
Over.
The ditch. Who's, who controls the air over the ditch?
I would imagine that would be the control, water control district.
It would, okay. So to, for it not to be the control district, then we would have to look at the actual, what the, every owner of the land alongside it is, right? That's a.
My guess, you'd have to look at the O R Ss to see what, you know, who owns the space above that, but generally speaking, it's, you know, completely, you know, totally end of, so you get into the airways.
Do you get into the aerospace?
Aerospace, aviation.
Counselor, just for, out of curiosity, the ditch, this, this waterway by the library here, or rather than the canal?
Went down that way.
Yeah, I'm talking about the waterway that runs by Moxie Berries and that's the ditch, and it comes, yeah, down to the library. The one I, the one that I want to have many dragon boat races on.
I like that. Why not real ones?
It's too big.
Duck! Okay.
The Erie Canal song says that.
I like it.
Duck, bridge coming down. Load, go load.
Duck! Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lance and, um, library. Pam, good evening, and thank you for being here.
I have nothing to add, except, oh, wait, it's summer reading program time. Come on over and see our kids going in and out, and the community is, is included that by, we've put stuffed animals in all of the different stores and everything, and the kids are going through town and looking in the stores to try to find the animals and see how many they can find in the community. It's, it's really fun.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Let's see, we have presentations, comments from the public again, another chance? Um, nothing, okay. Business from the city administrator, Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I have several things. It's been alluded to, but we are planning on canceling the July fifth meeting with a meeting midweek this week and a, and a holiday didn't seem to make much sense. We had a little longer agenda this time, we'll have a little longer agenda on the eighteenth, but we've talked about that, and so I just want to formally announce that. I have a few other things, but at first I want to give Lance a chance to talk about I-Serve.
Thank you, Keith. This last Saturday, we had I-Serve in the community, we had four churches involved. Forgive me, I don't know all of them. I know Foothills Church really coordinated the job, and State United Methodist was a big part of it as well, and we had some.
New life?
New life, thank you, Counselor. But we had, I have approximately a hundred, a hundred individuals in the community doing various jobs. Some of those jobs, you may have already noticed, State and City Hall was painted along with the Star Theater. We had wooden signs, the entrance signs to State and all cleaned and painted. We had the I V control in Wilderness Park, they had over seventy-five bags of I V cut out of the trees, which was a huge, huge project. We, again, painted fish kill, cat space and signs throughout the community. I think we had over a hundred and fifty done this last weekend. We had two of the three tennis courts cleaned, power washed, and brushed off, they looked real nice. We painted the ramp to the courthouse and sanded it down, repainted the ramp. It looks very good, and we pulled weeds around the library, and I think that looks real good. So the churches and the volunteers need to be commended for their, their service to the community. I think it looks real nice, and they did a very good job. I'd like to add that Tim Taylor was a huge help. He coordinated all the volunteers for the I-Serve, and he was just a huge part, great help. I'd like just, not recommend, but just acknowledge him. And that's it. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Lance. Keith?
I also want to, you know, congratulate and thank Lance. He did a great job and came in and helped with all of that on Saturday, so I want to recognize tonight Ken Cartwright is, is doing his last recording of the city council meetings. He's been doing it for quite a few years. I want to thank him for his, his time and service, and, and we'll move forward with a new plan for recording in the future, but tonight I just want to say thank you for your time and consideration all these years. Finally tonight, I do want to thank Andy Parks, the staff, budget committee. As we complete the budget, it's, it's been a time-consuming process, it's been a change in thought process, and everyone was just wonderful and terrific and bought in and was engaged, and I just want to thank everybody for that, and I appreciate their hard work and want to recognize that. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I wondered, did either you or Pam, does somebody want to say something about a new library director coming on board? Are we ready to announce that or not?
Well, we, we were going to do an announcement when she starts, but she starts officially on July fifth, Tuesday, July fifth, so we'll do a formal announcement, we'll, we'll do something, a press release and on Facebook when she's, she's here and present.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't want to jump the gun, which I already did with, with saying something about it if neither of you were going to, so it got messed up anyway. Business from the council. I didn't have anything else, but, nothing? Future agenda items for Monday, the eighteenth, employee recognition, wildlife meadows development agreement, business survey results, property maintenance code, public hearing on code amendments, and monthly staff report. Everybody try to get involved in the July fourth parade, always a lot of fun, and it's supposed to be a nice day. It's going to rain the fifth, but the fourth is supposed to be okay. So I got to see if I can coax Gus to get up on the old Dodge and ride along with me, or some veterans, either one. Okay, we're done. Thank you, folks.